Right, good evening. This meeting is in order, please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Roll call.
Jamie Bailey, board member.
Bernadette Bauer, board member.
Stephanie Smith, board member.
Ryan Cristelli, board member.
Michael Sted, board member.
Greg Scorgis, staff.
Jeff Monroe, staff.
Marilyn Pearl, staff.
Lisa Arnold, staff.
Dean Walker, staff.
Eric Snis, staff.
Okay. We'll have board meeting minutes for June 14, 2023.
Motion for a board meeting minutes for June 14, 2023.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
I'll move the approval of consent agendas.
A second. There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move right into our strategic planning with Mr. Smith.
This is really the culmination of everything that you've already seen across school years of five initiatives. So I'm going to apply to this presentation. This is a presentation Chris put together, Chris Martin presenting this at the National Superintendents Conference this past week, Washington U.C. as their part of their presentation that they did in breakout sessions. So I'm going to go through the beginning part of it and then I'll just kind of jump through several slides because it's data that we've already seen from last board meetings data dashboards and all the other presentations from the initiative groups. So this is the mission statement of the strategic plan. Together we empower elementarygoers to reach new heights, fostering a culture of excellence, belonging, life, long learning community. The vision is the LMA School District Division's a future where every elementarygoer takes flight equipped with the knowledge, skills, resilience to navigate their unique journeys, contribute meaningfully to their communities and embrace opportunities that await. That'll be, that'll be clearly part of our front page on our website. I know that Chris wants the strategic plan to be very visible to community parents. This was his present, part of his presentation. It was about where the school district is about. Here's, as we look at the opportunities. This was a few, I'm not going to read through all of this right here, but this is really what we talked about in the last presentation when he presented as far as like when we looked at that kindergarten data, that 70%, you know, percent at standard, or maybe it's ninth grade, 33%. So there's an opportunity to gain and improve. Same thing with some secondary, special education. All have areas that we can definitely dive into and see how we can improve. Five initiatives, say that is, I think, talking to Chris before this presentation is really, I wanted to emphasize that buying is at large, that everybody is familiar with all of these initiatives already. So it's, it's really just coming back together, putting all the package, but it's something that everybody should be familiar with and talking about throughout the district and everything. This was the very first, our very first book. Exactly. So I think that's pretty, yeah, this is part of his, his super presentation at the conference.
I believe that we got it also.
Did you get it too?
Reading material. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Summertime reading was really, we gave him that, not that for a while. It's a little try. So this is for the SEL in, looking down at the bottom at the strategic plan. By next, June of 2024, these are the three steps. So connect educational programs to students post-secondary and high goals. Use mastery-based learning to begin integrating learning opportunities to meet individual student learning goals and to identify student interest and increase programming options for students. So each one of the initiatives, he has a key step system between now and next June, what are we looking to accomplish strategically. And now this is where I'm going to kind of skip through all this because this is data that you've already seen throughout the school year. The early learning, the three steps for strategic plan. This identify the kindergarten readiness standards, break standards down into student-centered format, build partnerships with early learning partners and families, provide support to early learning partners and families. And so, the margin rate as far as improving kindergarten readiness from the 35% to over 50% by the 2024 BAC assessment. That actually happens, let's see, because the BAC assessment is right at the very beginning of the school year. We don't do a second one. Maybe he's thinking by the, this is probably not this fall's assessment, but fall.
So the true fall of '24 is what we're.
But it won't be this next year's kindergarten.
Sure.
Data that we've already seen. He did tell me in a conversation yesterday that they, Mark got to meet with the district that actually started the badge books at small districts. So he is super excited about that. Saying that Mark is going to become that one.
Good deal.
Just to even, to approve upon what's already been started. And the master-based learning strategic plan is that all students will make a minimum of one-year academic growth across all grade levels from prior assessments. The percentage of students to standards must remain consistent this year. So step system in that for that is identify the academic standards students must need each year, ensure alignment of student learning activities to academic standards and particularly align standards across grade levels, integrate academic standards across content areas to provide holistic. And that, this is, these are things that have, we've already been working on, but continue to refine, get it to its, you know, full, ready to fully launch and empower system and have everything aligned and to. Yeah, this data that he just, just went through in the last. I wasn't sure if this was the, because there, there was a group of a team at Marzano last week. Was this the same team that services from previous time? They've gone twice now.
I think it was from this last week because I recognize one of the lighting they had.
Oh.
I recognize Jamie's talk.
Jeff. Jeff didn't, he couldn't love that.
It was recently.
Okay.
Most damn hard.
So continuing with the, the standards aligned of the master-based learning change process. And the big thing, all students making one-year journey. Career college readiness, improve post-secondary going rate from the 33% that we saw on the data to 40% by the spring of 2024. So accomplish that by identifying student post-secondary pathways, build post-secondary dual credit articulations aligned to student pathways. All students will earn a minimum of 12 dual credits aligned to a post-secondary pathway. Students are barriers to student post-secondary transition plans such as FAS and applications. Get students to be able to pursue those post-secondary. It's exciting, exciting to see all the dual credit opportunities and get us all, all of those details put into place where students will graduate to have 12 credits. This is data that we talked about in the state. Some of this is here at the FASPA filing school. We do offer the FASPA workshop, but I think we're students and parents involved in that. To accreditation, this was Harvard, all of those pieces. Then. This part, this is the, I had to ask Chris about this. This is the industry pathway, looking at manufacturing, what we had in place with the apprenticeship program and then Allied Health. I'm not going to be able to speak to the Allied Health timeline. So I think there's some pieces that might be in place this year, but I take it forward. But it's definitely all of the, the work has started to, to get those things. In place, I know there's been a lot of, a lot of work that has been done. And I think of fire science that I know been, which is something foundational work for these things. It's definitely. And then the final initiative, strategic plan is to increase the time students on IAPs receive services inside the general education classroom from 5% to 15% by 2024. So identify the types of learning support needed by students, provide scaffolding supports to academic teachers and support students in general education classrooms, and to restructure special education teachers to help students toward students and teachers to provide support. Additional information on the UCL. Some of the pieces we've already seen throughout this last year on the UCL presentations. Here's the rephrase looking at the next three years for some of the outcomes of what we're seeing. Say, a lot of the foundational pieces are already in place. And we've been building on those the last couple of years. So this continues from where we started. Questions on the inside, I'm sure Chris will be back. This will be clearly communicated out as transparently as we can and have it on their website. District communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this time we're going to go ahead and introduce our, my head, our new student representatives. Kyla, thank you, cannot be here tonight, however. Is it Mia or Maya?
Mia.
Mia DeJesus. So we can start and introduce ourselves. Welcome.
Sure. My name is Michael Smith, again, we met during the interview.
And I'm Ryan Cristelli during the interviews. Welcome aboard.
It feels funny, like you can't read our names. Hi, Stephanie Smith, welcome.
Bernadette Bauer.
Jamie Bailey, welcome.
I'm Mrs. Walker, I'm the one who spent even the initial job.
Thank you.
And then we have for you a T-shirt and then this is your student rep binder. Can you go ahead and have a seat right over here? You're welcome. Work. Have we gotten, can I get to go over and see if she's able to go to.
And you don't have to wear that shirt at all, more.
So Ms. Walker will get together with you and talk to you about WASDA conference in November to check availabilities for your dates for you to attend WASDA with the board. And there'll be other board reps and you'll go through some onboarding and all that good stuff.
And on the inside of your binder is a welcome letter and things to expect.
All right, thank you.
So welcome, thank you for being here. Thank you for stepping up. Okay, we are going to do the elementary counselor update for Mr. Scruggins.
Okay.
Interesting.
So we had, we posted for a counselor, we looked through the interview site, but we did not find a candidate that we felt was ready to lead a school set of kids. So we are in the process of reposting position. In fact, we're, it's going on right now. I submitted an application and informed control. So we posted, I've already had two people talking to me about the position that two people are interested in being a counselor at our school. So that's very promising. So we're hoping that we find a good candidate there. If that doesn't work, some back, some backup plans that we have. Stacy Rocky has been in contact with two different agencies that contract services. And we had a name referred to as the name of a person that's for a counselor position. So we think we look at as an option and if we don't find a good candidate in this. I've had a more expanded in contact with St. Martin's College to see the, the people that are currently holding their masters of getting their, I forget what the master's degree is called, does anybody know to be a counselor? It's a Mac or something like that. So seeing if any of those people, if they have a, if they want to be in schools to, to confide that. If that doesn't work, if we're still down to the wire and we don't have somebody, we're going to get real creative, we'll look at seeing if we could possibly have a teacher fill the role as a support person to help us for a year until we can find hopefully a counselor. So, so we have layers of, of plans that to get a counselor. And we're going to get one this next round. So I just wanted to update you guys on that.
Okay.
Answering questions if you have.
So is the thought, just thinking out loud here. Would Heather be an option to fill part of that role and do her new role? Or is that?
It's, no, she's, she's going to be busy in her new role. But certainly having her there, she's been counselor over 20 years.
Right.
So whoever we bring in, we're going to have a tremendous support system for that person.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, communications and comments. Do we have anybody here from ETO? ESP? EKopa? Admin? Do we have anybody registered for persons to be here? Is there anybody here this evening that'd like to be heard? Little miss, you don't want to be heard? Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to unfinished business. We have the approval of superintendent Christmas' contract. Everybody should have had that link in their packet for you to look over. We did remove the clause that he had to purchase a residence by September of 2022 that had been completed and committed. So we removed that. Yeah, if there's any questions, turns, comments, let's go back to John Gordon.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of superintendent Christmas' contract.
Second.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any other, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, sorry about that. Approval of track team postseason travel.
Move for the approval for track postseason travel.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of school improvement plans.
I'll move for the approval of the school improvement plans.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business is the approval of a summer risk for CTE. I don't think we have anybody approval to, to present. It's pretty straightforward.
Move for the approval of summer risk for CTE.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the, no, did I skip? Yep, approval of the change, the board retreat from the July 12, 2023 to July 19 of 2023.
We have a time on this.
No, that's why you guys need to give me.
Is that a regular meeting day?
It's a Wednesday. It's not.
Can we do it in our regular meeting time or somewhere close to it? So not everyone has to be encumbered by.
Yes, and you can start it at six o'clock.
Do we want to try to start it between five and six? What?
I know that I'm, I am scheduled to work that day. Quite sure.
When you'll be off?
When I'll be off, but I.
Would we push it closer to the?
But I think the six o'clock is safer.
I'm not sure of that.
And is this open to the public, your retreat?
I don't think the retreat is.
No.
In fact, it's one of the ones.
What's that?
It's one of the ones.
It's one of the ones that is not, yeah. Because this is the board on board goals and.
But I come to that correct?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it has to be posted, but it's.
Yes.
It will be, yeah, because we're changing the date.
Yes.
So I'll move for the approval to change the board retreat and board meeting. Why does it say on board meeting?
Well, because we thought that, I thought there was a regular board meeting then too. But I'm going to interject here, we do have to have a regular board meeting for the vouchers.
But there's, isn't there a board meeting?
No, there isn't one prior. You're moving the 12th to the 19th per, is that right?
Yeah.
And so we need to have at least open the meeting, approve the vouchers.
Okay, that's fine.
And then go into your.
We're fine with that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I guess we can do that.
All right.
Okay.
So I'll move for the approval to change the board retreat and board meeting on July 12th to July 19th.
No, it's two scheduled too. Because the last is the budget.
Yeah.
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 I'll second that.
I was like, is that only one meeting?
Okay, perfect. Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval for the district strategic plan.
Move for the approval of the 2023-24 district strategic plan.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the Ag FFA booster fundraiser.
So on this one, I submitted it along with my sister. So I will not be voting on it, but it's just the basic FFA concessions at the home, all home football games. I'm in the process of moving my way out while somebody else comes in, but I needed to get this on there to get the group.
Move to approve the Ag booster fundraising.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Lisa, enrollment.
Year-end enrollment. We ended the year with 1591.94. We were 99.85 up from budget. So we ended the year very well. Any questions on enrollment?
No, it's just a crazy number. That's like almost 100, right?
Yeah.
90.85. We were 1603 at 1.61. Anybody have any questions for Lisa? A lot of kids. Okay, thank you. What? No? No? Okay. Budget report.
Right now, we're running about 2.5 million. June is usually a very high account fail month, which it was close to 600,000. Our first run, which is a lot higher than normal. But I think we're still on track to be right around the 5.5 that it projected out. You don't see any thing that will change it downward. So I think we're doing pretty good. If you guys have any questions about it, I'm hoping these report to be self.
I love how they're laid out.
So you can see every expense.
Like the visual?
I do.
I know, they're clean and nice and yeah, I like them a lot. Okay. No one has any questions? The only two future items we have are board retreat and budget approval. Which will future, and I just will be changed for the next report, I would make the assumption. And with that being said, we'll go ahead and leave the regular board meeting. We're going to resume to executive session for 30 minutes with no action being taken.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks.
Have a great night. Congratulations on your first board meeting. Congratulations on your first board meeting.
Oh, the top of my head, that was nice.
I make a motion, will you adjourn the meeting?
Send a motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned.
At seven oh three.
Lighting right.